Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have roll call, please?
Alderman Keon.
Here.
Alderman Zalinski.
Here.
Alderman Benner.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Crowe Kramer.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Taylor and Rollins Jump have been excused.
The first item on the agenda this evening is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. If there's anyone who wishes to address the council, if you could step up to the microphone at this time and state your name and address.
Kelsey Berry, on behalf of Rebecca Durant, 1651 Brighton Beach Road, Manassas, Wisconsin, 54952.
Go ahead.
Go ahead and address now. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for letting me speak here today. I'm on behalf of Becky, who was unable to attend because she had a prior family vacation scheduled. So she had become aware that there were some issues pertaining to the licensing or maybe questions regarding her licensing. So she definitely wanted to be proactive, to reach out to you all and address some of the concerns that she knew might have been an opportunity, and also to share her passion about, you know, keeping her business afloat and running. So any of you that have had, you know, workings with Becky over the last several months knows that she's very enthusiastic and very hopeful about 5:00 somewhere and, you know, making sure that she turns this into a positive establishment. She does know that recently there's been some, you know, concerns around the noise violations and/or possibly the awnings. So she wanted to let you know that she's been proactive in meeting with a lot of neighbors to ensure that she, you know, speaks with them about keeping the noise down and ensuring that she keeps the door shut at a decent hour that's, you know, acceptable to all in the area. She has since also removed the awnings. She continues to be very proactive with, you know, members of the city, so the Chief of Police. I believe she had mentioned the City Health Inspector and will continue to do so on a regular basis. She wants you to know that she's been in the industry for about 17 years and, you know, she was very hesitant to take this opportunity but also, you know, excited because, you know, despite having the background that, you know, the Hanks Fifth Ward had, you know, she was very hopeful and, you know, positive that she could turn this around and has since done so. So she really wanted me to come and state that to you all. She's very optimistic that she's going to continue to make this, you know, a positive establishment. She does plan to introduce a food menu in the next couple of months, which will hope to draw in even more workers and patrons that will be coming in to have, you know, fine foods for lunch and/or dinner. So, you know, continue to make positive changes as it comes about. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Hi, my name's Tyler Damo. I live at 57 Appleton Street, Manassas, Wisconsin. So tonight you're going to be voting on Hanks Fifth, what used to be Hanks Fourth Avenue at 5:00 somewhere. The noise has gotten a tad better. We still get noise. The point is that there's just no easy solution to it. I'm for business in Manassas. But the fact is, I have neighbors who moved out less than a month ago because of noise, because of these issues. They had two little girls. They had called and said that you were being too loud, and they told them there was nothing they could do about it. I have thick concrete walls, walls in my basement, well, not basement, it's the ground floor where I sleep in. It is built out of blocks of concrete, and I can hear the noise. So when I can hear the noise, when there's walls of concrete insulation and drywall, that is a lot of noise. And I just want you to know that the city either needs to take better steps to ensure that the noise gets better handled to have this business be there. It's in a residential area. It's not in downtown Manassas. It's not, you know, in an area where there are no homes. There are homes with families and kids, who have kids who get to wake up at 1:00 in the morning to hear people yelling, screaming. You know, I have neighbors who are thinking about leaving still because of the noise. You know, when you have kids, there's a school down the road. You know, this is a neighborhood that's designed for kids to be in and be playful and all that. But there's noise in the kids have to wake up at midnight, 1:00, 10:00 in the night because of noise. It's a very deep issue that a lot of us are concerned about, and I know that a lot of people just don't necessarily feel like even saying anything is going to make a difference. So I hope that you take these into consideration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to be here this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the Report of Department Heads, Staff and Consultants. We do have the Chair of the Landmarks Commission here this evening, Tom Grotty, and he's here to present the winner of the Discover Historic Manassas Photo Contest.
Thank you.
If you're going to, are you going to speak? We should grab the microphone if you want to do it up here.
On behalf of the Landmarks Commission, we are awarding a prize to Jessica Anderson for the, do you want to stand?
Oh.
You might as well get your picture taken.
Okay.
For the winner of the photo contest, I know that we've had a few questions with item number 10 on the photo contest. When we took the picture, Nick and I, there were no leaves on the tree in front of the building, which is jitters, and that's what the item was, the light fixture that was on the front porch of the old house. So that was the problem with that. But she got it. And then I went, well, I have the mic here. The Landmarks Commission has put in images on the 212, the planter block building on Main Street, and there's some images of the gargoyle that used to be on the roof of that building. And if anyone in the public has any knowledge of where that gargoyle went, or if it's possible that we could make a cast of it somehow to get it back on the top of the building, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I think this was the third year that we've done this.
Yes.
And this is in recognition of Historic Preservation Month. The Landmarks Commission is trying to bring a little bit of awareness to some of the very interesting architecture that's located throughout Manassas. And we, I believe there's 10 or 12 different photos every year that they have people look for, and it's actually a lot of fun to watch people running around town looking for all the different pieces and parts. You had me stumped on a couple of them this year, which is unusual. Last two years I was able to guess them all pretty quickly. So, good job, guys, and I hope that it continues the interest in some of our historic buildings. Item 2 is the Minutes and Communications. Do we have a motion to receive? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we make a motion to receive and put on file Minutes A through K and Communications L through O.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. The food will be okay, Mayor. It's on the Manassas Board of Health. The parking rec is not on here, but it has to do with the park. May I address Mr. Tungate?
Sure, if you want.
Question?
Is there a question? Sure.
Yeah, it has to do about a park.
We'll see if we can answer it.
Okay. So, Brian, on, in the Board of Health Minutes, the Environmental Health Program, Todd Drew closed off Coslo Park because of unsanitary conditions?
Well, that was a while back, and we did have a period of time where we had to get in there and, and actually clean the back room out of the concession center at Coslo, and so...
At the ball diamond?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. And so Service Master, we called them, and, you know, a lot of times it's been falling on one person to do that, and it's kind of a big job to stay on top of. So we worked out with the school district. We got Service Master in there and got things cleaned up, and Todd was aware of that going on.
Okay. So that's what it was. That's what I was wondering.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. Item L, the Checklist for Liquor License Inspections from the Fire Department, Health Department and Building Inspector. Thank you for that list. My question is for the Building Inspector, and I guess that was following the Greg's Department. Is the Inspection Department in flux right now, and how do we, I'd like to go over some of this stuff on this list with the Building Inspection Department, because there's things that aren't being covered in a lot of these areas.
Well, there's changes pending in, because the Inspection Service that the city contracts with has been bought out, and I will be bringing back at the next Common Council Meeting some proposals to how we might change things going forward.
Okay, because there's one liquor license that's up for approval tonight, and they talk about broken windows, and there's literally windows missing. And the Inspection Department gave the Clear Bill of Health there for everything was checked and approved. And then I'd like to see something on there for renovations that aren't permitted, like when they renovate bathrooms, that they bring them up to ADA or close to ADA. I know some existing bathrooms cannot be brought up, but the fixtures and stuff can. You just can't be swapping things out, and they should be looking at this a little bit closer than just this list here. So when we do get an Inspection Department together, maybe we, I could sit down or somebody else and get a more thorough list, sort of watching these establishments a little bit closer on their renovations.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. To piggyback off that, Greg, I mean, on the liquor license renewal form, broken windows is on there, and if they have broken windows, how did that not get checked? So, just a question for you.
Which establishment was that?
5:00 somewhere. So, thank you.
And this was all stuff that was supposed to be taken care of. I'm sure this is going to be coming up further on the agenda, and this stuff was supposed to be taken care of before renewal again.
Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item G is the Consent Agenda. There are five items. The minutes to approve from the Common Council of June 1st, the Board of Public Works recommendations from June 1st, for the street use application for Community Fest Parade of Lights on July 3rd, the change order to Don Hippos and Sons for the 2015 Water Main Reconstruction Project, add of $45,220 to execute the memorandum of agreement for stormwater detention pond construction and maintenance pending the city attorney's final review of the document, and the Personnel Committee recommendation from June 1 to amend the job title of the city attorney human resource director to city attorney and maintain current salary. Does anyone wish to have any of the items separated at this point? Seeing no one, do we have a motion for the Consent Agenda? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 1 through 5.
There's a motion, a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 6-0.
Item I is Action Items. The first item is the Accounts Payable and Payroll for June 4th through June 11th. Is there a motion this evening? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the Accounts Payable and Payroll for the term of 6/4/15 to 6/11/15 in the amount of $2,114,834.76.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Nichols?
I'd like to remove check number 50212 in the amount of $50 made out to Jeff Nichols. I will abstain from that vote.
Neither one of us got the numbers. We're writing...
50212.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, the motion then would be for the Accounts Payable and Payroll excluding check number 50212. Could we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 6-0.
And then still on the floor is the Separated Check, so we would have a motion to approve check number 50212. Is there any discussion on that? We don't need a separate motion. If there's no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 5-0, with Alderman Nichols abstaining.
Item 3 is the Beverage Operator's License Applications for the 2015 through 2017 licensing year. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the Beverage Operator's License Applications for the 2015 through 2017 licensing period as listed under approved in the Police Department's memo dated June 10, 2015.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Zalinski?
Is there any discuss, discuss 5:00 somewhere?
No, these are bartenders licenses.
Okay. Oh, just bartender. Okay.
We'll actually take all the establishments separately, one by one. Any discussion on the bartenders licenses? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 6-0.
Item 3 is Liquor License Applications for the 2015-16 Licensing Year. There is a memo in the packet regarding the items that are or are not complete. I would recommend that we take them separately, one at a time, if you'd like to, if anyone would like to go down the list and start at the top. Not one at one, all at once?
I will.
Alderman Benner?
I drew a short straw. This time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Liquor License Application for the licensing year of 2015 through 16 for a Class A liquor and malt license for Doggencorp LLC doing business as Dollar General at 1135 Appleton Road. Deb Jopick is the agent.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Did you have discussion?
Oh, no.
Okay. Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 6-0.
Item B is a Class A liquor license for Quick Mart. Is there a motion? Alderman Benner?
I'll make a motion for the Class A liquor and malt license for Quick Mart, Manassas, at 1515 Appleton Road.
There's a motion, a second. Is there discussion on this application? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 6-0.
Item C is a Class B liquor and malt for Juanita's Hacienda. Is there a motion this evening? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve the Class B liquor and malt license for Juanita's Hacienda at 190 Main Street.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 6-0.
Item D is a Class A liquor and malt license for Stop &amp; Go LLC. Is there a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve the Class A liquor and malt license for Stop &amp; Go LLC at 1200 Plank Road.
There's a motion, a second. Did you have discussion?
Yes. Is this establishment one that we had issues with in the past that then changed ownership so that they could get a liquor license? Have there been any other issues?
Arms aren't quite that long. Answered your question. Since the other agent has taken over, there's been nothing that came up on the criminal history that would preclude her from being licensed agent going forward.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 6-0.
Item E is a Reserve Class B Liquor and Malt License for Margaritaville Lounge. And before we go on with this, I forgot to ask the clerk if, could you comment on this one?
As of June 11th, on the Margaritaville Lounge, they still had owed some taxes on that, and so that's been paid, and everything is current for financial obligations to the city.
So staff would recommend approval of this one at this point?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion for this? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to approve the Class B liquor and malt license for Margaritaville Lounge at 6 Takeoff Street.
There's a motion, a second. Is there further discussion? Oh, Kevin?
Chief, I'd like to ask the chief if, we used to have some problems with this facility, if I recall right. Have they been good the last year?
Yeah, relatively speaking. Certainly the issues there haven't been to the level that they were in the past. In addition, if you call, our role in this is really the criminal convictions that would have taken place with the owners, and there's nothing that would indicate that we shouldn't approve.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. Chief, any criminal convictions in the vicinity, the parking lot, the patrons there affecting the neighborhood?
Over the past year?
Yes.
Yes. Well, criminal? Not necessarily. Have there been ordinance violations? Certainly. But again, the way that the ordinance is constructed, it's nothing that attributes points to that person's license. And again, our role in the approval process is fairly limited. We look at, we don't look at the history of the establishment over the past year. We're more looking at the licensed agent to make sure that they don't have any criminal convictions since the last time they were up for application. That would be a different process that the city code allows for if there are problems or issues that there are convictions, and those convictions turn into demerit points on there, and that's something that the city attorney and the council would then play a role in, having various administrative type of actions that could be taken against it, such as suspension of license or closing for a period of time.
Is the department receiving very many complaints from the neighborhood?
If for Margaritaville, no. We haven't had many neighbor complaints there recently.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? If not, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 6-0.
Item F is a Class B liquor and malt license for 5:00 somewhere. Is there a motion on this one? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion to approve the Class B liquor and malt beverage license for 5:00 somewhere at 600 Broad Street.
There's a motion, a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you.
Told you we'd get here eventually.
Yes. Thank you for doing that. Greg, are all the sign ordinances taken care of?
The permanent wall-mounted signs are all legal and conforming. The chalkboard sign is a permissible sign, however, the size of it exceeds what is permitted under ordinance, so we will be sending them notice, informing them that although they may keep the sign, it has to be reduced to, I believe, it's six square feet.
Okay. And we mentioned the windows. I went by there today, and there's plastic in one window. It's totally missing. I'm sure there's cracked windows, and this stuff was supposed to be taken care of shortly last time the new owner or leasie was in here.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of the window condition. We will address that.
Well, you got to, it's on the second floor.
Look up.
Yeah. You got to look up.
Yeah.
And who do I address the noise problem with, then?
Mr. Steika.
Mr. Steika. How are we addressing the noise problem, and how many calls have there been? I've been talking to the neighbors, and some of them cannot sleep.
I don't have the specific numbers with me. No, I looked it up after the last meeting, and I want to see, there's two ways that the calls can be dispositioned. One would be with a written report, and the other one would be if it's completely not founded, it just is a computer entry. When we spoke last time, I believe I indicated there were three that there was the documentation of, and that is correct. And the documentation would indicate that there was no issue when the officers were out there. I found an additional, I believe it was five calls, that were just computer log item ones where, when the officers arrived on scene, it was a variety of different calls, is what the neighbors have discussed, as far as people being outside and being loud. So when the officers show up and there's no one outside, it's an unfounded complaint. There were a couple of noise complaints, and one of the noise complaints was an acoustic guitar and someone playing the acoustic guitar, so they agreed to close the door on that one. And then there were one or two other ones where there was the complaint of noise coming from inside the bar, and at the lot line, it was unfounded again. To the neighbors, I'm quite certain that they wouldn't be calling and complaining if they didn't feel that it was reaching a certain level, but it certainly isn't the level of, at least when the officers are out there, that, you know, music with loud bass, that the windows are shaking, and it's, what is that acceptable level of a neighborhood bar? And I don't know that the city code necessarily really addresses it. So we're kind of stuck.
So where do we go forward with this? Because it shouldn't be the neighbor that has to make all the complaints or keep track of the noise and...
Well, and as we discussed, I know the owner of the bar was looking at trying to have that smoking area moved from the front of the bar, which I think has been a point of contention with some of the neighbors, more to the parking lot area, which is a little more fenced in and closed off. Now, is that going to cause more of an issue with people towards the back? I don't know if you're just displacing it from one spot to the next, but they were looking at that option. Again, I don't know that we have a very good solution based upon the way that the ordinance are constructed right now. There are some that, some municipalities that will have a very specific way, that if you measure the noise at a certain spot or a certain level. We don't have noise measuring equipment, but if that's, you know, a direction. And then what do you establish that level at? You know, X amount of decibels, what might be okay or acceptable to you. And I'm not a decibel kind of person, so I couldn't tell you if 10 or 20 or 100 is a lot or a little. But, you know, 20 might be acceptable to you, but someone who lives next door might want it at 15. So that, I think, would be something the council would have to kind of have an idea what would be acceptable.
Do you have any ideas for this? Because I don't, I'm the alderman in that district, and the other alderman that shares that district isn't here tonight. We're the ones receiving these complaints. There's people going to bed with their earplugs in, and they still can hear it.
Yep. Specifically, no. This is more of a city issue, and we're here to enforce the rules that the council establishes. And I think it's the council that needs to make the decision as far as what is that acceptable level of noise in a neighborhood, and then we're certainly at your will to follow through on those intentions. Short of the rules of the council, what we've always done in the past is we try to serve as that mediator. So, and sitting down and talking with the bar owner, and she has been very receptive, and she has come and either called or stopped in to talk to me at least three, four times, trying to, you know, work with issues, and wants to be a good steward in the neighborhood, but also knows that it is a neighborhood bar, and, you know, where do you find that line? It's a tough call.
Yeah, I really feel for the neighbors, because I left that neighborhood 20 years ago from the house that that young gentleman's talking about right now, and it was a problem then, and now it's still a problem. We're, I find it hard to get anywhere with this. We're losing some really good residents in that neighborhood, and it's not your fault, but I don't know it's lack of enforcement on somebody's end. There's got to be a noise meter somewhere in the city that somebody should be using. You're not that expensive with that.
Well, sure, but even if you buy the equipment, what is that level, then? And that's what hasn't been established. And as a general rule of thumb, under the other noise ordinances that we have within the city, we've generally used the lot line. If it's clearly audible from the lot line, then it would be a violation.
Well, it's clearly audible, and I don't know why the neighbors have to be doing these... And I don't know why the neighbors have to be doing this. Maybe somebody should be checking a little bit more regularly on this place because the neighbors are concerned about reporting it for retaliation, problems or whatever. And they come to me because that's my job.
Sure.
Bring this stuff up. And now I hear there's not that many complaints.
Well, I would say that there have been a fair amount of complaints, but they've been unfounded. So in the short time that they've been there, I think we talked about seven to eight-ish types of calls, but none of them have risen to the level that, that would have, they were either found to be, that existed at that time or that officers felt that reached that level that someone's to be cited for.
Yeah, the owner might, or the person that's leasing the place might be really concerned, but she's not there all the time and that might becoming the problem, where they're just leaving the door hanging open and it's a younger crowd than used to hang out there and they tend to play music a little bit louder and I don't know what the, I feel for the neighbors. And it sounds like we have no, really no teeth in this whole thing about noise, other than when it becomes a nuisance, and it is becoming a nuisance. And we can address it if it becomes a nuisance. And where do we go from there if it is becoming a nuisance?
I don't know if the city attorney had some insights that she wanted to share. I'll ask the council to have the city attorney address this.
Would you like to comment, Attorney Captain?
If this was a problem noise for many years, it really could have been addressed prior to the license having been issued. That really was the time to address it. It also could have been addressed in perhaps a changing in zoning. I don't know what the zoning is in that area to allow it. But if it's in a residential neighborhood, that's still for the future. In the event that there is something, it could be addressed in that fashion as well. And when I say in zoning, it would perhaps, you know, requiring some kind of soundproofing. And that goes to the future. And particularly if this was something that's been known, that's, you know, appears as if some people are just complaining now, but if this was something, I believe, that was mentioned, that it had been going on for many, many years, it could have been something that perhaps was addressed in changes to the ordinances and nuisances occur. And I know I was asked at the last meeting, would this constitute a nuisance? No. It, just people talking or speaking about issues and noises aren't enough. There does have to be some convictions behind, noise convictions that are behind something and then after some convictions are on the record, so to speak, that is what demonstrates to a court that there's a history of noise violations constituting a nuisance. And a court then would be looking at, what are the times? Was it reasonable, based on the times, the numbers and those kinds of things, before you'd even be able to get a court order that would indicate that there was a nuisance and that a place has to be closed down? Our ordinance really, as far as what can be looked at in approving licenses, just deals with financial, if there are financial obligations that are delinquent or unpaid to the city, if there, if the premises do not conform to the, and this is limited, sanitary, safety and health requirements. That's, those are the general terms, sanitary, safety and health requirements. And so that's very limited. And I believe that somebody did mention that in our ordinance, which deals with the, I'm trying to, I think it's the collection of points, which is what you do not want to get if you are an alcohol license holder. But if there are noise violations, that is not one of the citations for which points are assessed currently in our ordinance. So that would not even be of consideration in whether or not to grant a license, not under our current ordinance.
Pam, what were you looking for ahead of this? Because we held this and there was noise complaints then. What were you looking from the council to have a special meeting and address it then? We said this should have been pressed, should have been brought forward prior to the council meeting. And this was brought up prior to the council meeting for approval?
No, I heard mentioned that a noise problem with a bar at that specific location, meaning in a residential neighborhood, has been a problem for many, many years. And what I was referencing is that I don't think someone just built this establishment or just built this building and operated it as a bar. It's my understanding that it was operated as a bar prior to someone operating this facility. And that's what I'm referring to. That if there's a history of having a bar in this residential neighborhood that has caused noise, then perhaps the zoning ordinances or something could have been changed to address when it occurred, you know, when it occurs next, when somebody subsequent to the former or current owners have another bar.
What kind of history are you looking for? Because I lived there 20 years ago. There's a history. I moved out of that neighborhood because of the, because of the bars and what brought to the neighborhood. And I, the other neighbor moved out that just lives right across the street. Now I'm hearing that the neighbor that lives 100 yards or 100 feet off of that is hearing this through a cement wall. There's a history there. And I don't see where anything's going to be anything different going forward on this. And what are you looking for from us? This is a nuisance. And I don't know where to take it. I don't know what to tell the residents of this neighborhood. Rezone the whole neighborhood and turn it into one big bar or just spread down the street?
Did you want to comment to that or?
Where do we go from here? What do I tell these people? Or does anybody have, does any department head have an idea what I can tell these people? Because we received a lot of promises when she was up here first and a lot of these promises weren't fulfilled. There was going to be an awning on the building. Now the awning is completely gone. She even told us what color was going to be. I guess it was Jim Engelbert's color of his shirt at that time. Now the awning's completely gone. The building doesn't look that appealing right now. And they put a grass awning on it and that, now that's gone completely. Windows weren't fixed. The noise, it wasn't supposed to be, she said it wasn't going to be open, but that, we can't regulate when she's open and closed. I feel for the neighbors. There's a lot of promises made and we said, let's try it. Now we're trying it. I hope something changes. But I don't foresee it happening because there's going to be a different crowd there every shift change. And I'm not hearing any advice, what we can possibly change in the ordinance that's going to change this. Because the neighbors shouldn't be making the complaints all the time.
Did you want to comment to that or?
If you are getting calls with regard to what can be done, I just went through some of the things, some changes. It requires ordinance changes. I'm telling you what the ordinance, ordinances state, currently state, what is currently in the ordinances. The ordinances were drafted and were adopted by the common council. So whatever they say is what is, they need to be changed through an ordinance process if that is what the common council is looking for.
I'm sure that's, I'm sure that's what we're looking for because...
And as a council member, then it would be you that would be making, or a council member would be making recommendations for changes. And that would go through the legislative process and would be adopted with respect to zoning and things like that. I guess I don't know what the changes are that would be requested, so I can't really comment on them and what the applicability would be.
Okay, I'll just wait, I'll meet with the other aldermen from that other district and we'll decide what ordinances may possibly, we want to bring forward or have a meeting with you and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Before we move on, Mark, Chief Sekid, do you know if all those noise complaints were for this particular business or were they potentially for the similar business across the street as well?
The majority were for that specific business, but there were, I want to say three in that same period that we looked at for the other business.
Okay. I did stop by and talk to Rebecca middle of last week and although her business was very quiet at that point, the neighboring business had two patrons standing on the front porch and this is, I don't know if you call it the front stoop, whatever you call it, this is about three in the afternoon practically yelling across the street at someone walking by. So I am concerned that we may be picking on one business over another at this point too. Not that there may not be a problem at both, but I just wanted to make sure that we were attributing them to the right business. Rebecca did comment that she was intending to keep the doors closed at, I believe it was either 8:30 or 9 o'clock, and she hadn't been in the past, which I think is a good, is it leaking?
Yes.
I had someone coming, but call a plumber.
Well, good.
It's moving this way.
Oh, I didn't even notice it.
Good thing we didn't have the tables a little bit further, but, Mark, did you have some comments as well?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Attorney Captain, if I may ask, please, if, yeah, we can, the council can change or make ordinances. And if we would make an ordinance or change the ordinance or add to it, and you mentioned that it would start now so they would be grandfathered in? So if they still make noise, then it's, they're not against the ordinance? Or does it, or does, when you change an ordinance, the ordinance gets adopted and then everybody, no matter what it would be, starts right then and there with that ordinance?
Attorney Captain?
It depends what the ordinance change is. Some ordinance changes apply across the board to everyone upon an effective date or time. Other times, you know, it perhaps is, I guess it works more so when you're dealing with a building or something, if you're asking somebody, or sometimes with uses. Sometimes there's a grandfathering that occurs so that those who are currently using a parcel of property for a particular use may be grandfathered, but then subsequent owners would not be able to use, use it for that purpose, whatever it is. Buildings, I'm just thinking about, sometimes if it's determined to be a health and safety issue and there's expense that's going to be in, need to be incurred in order to bring, you know, make this change, that sometimes occurs immediately or everyone has to do it within a certain period of time. And other times, the building's grandfathered and it occurs, you know, in the future with some transition or whenever there's remodeling or something like that. I guess it just depends what it is.
Great. That's my question, yeah. Okay, thanks. Um, I, let's see, Greg, I guess, says under section 7-2-9 of the city code, and I won't read it, the rest of it, but one of them says must conform to all sanitary, safety and health, which the attorney mentioned, requirement of the state building. Are they selling food there right now? You selling food there right now?
They sell frozen pizzas.
Okay. In the bar? Do they cook them?
Yes.
Because under, under that, conform to all sanitary, safety and health requirements with broken windows or plastic windows, and maybe, attorney, you could help me with this, doesn't the word sanitary and health come into there? That that building's not actually then completely closed up, but then they're cooking food in there? Either one of you could answer that if possible?
The window actually is on the second floor, so it's in a different unit. There's a residential unit above it.
Are those apartments up there?
There is a residential unit above it, yes.
Okay.
That would be a separate unit. Their kitchen is currently closed.
Okay.
So they have a pizza oven, basically.
Right.
So they're not cooking.
No, they are cooking.
Well, the definition of a kitchen, though, is different than a heating.
Than a heating oven.
Yes, so it's a little different there, but...
Okay.
We will talk to them about getting that window fixed, though, and Rebecca did say they were working on that when I talked to her.
Things fine and whatever.
Yeah, no, no, it's in the second floor. The first floor window's cracked and she said she was getting that, working on getting that replaced as well. It was cracked when she moved in.
Okay.
But it's not a hole. It's just a crack in the glass.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none before Dan decides yes. We'll take a roll call vote then, please.
Well, she carried on roll call five one.
Item four is a request for approval of Wisconsin Department of Health Services Healthy Brain Initiative Dementia Friendly Communities Mini Grant. Director McKinney is unable, I should make sure, she was going to be unable to be here this evening. Director Stino and I will take any questions and try to answer them if anyone has any answered questions. Otherwise, if we could have a motion to approve. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the acceptance of the Wisconsin Department of Health Services Healthy Brain Initiative Dementia Friendly Communities Mini Grant.
Okay. And that would include approving, expending the funds in 2015, correct?
Yes.
That's what Director Stino wanted it to stay for sure. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Well, she carried on roll call six zero.
Item five is amendment number two to the Third Street Bridge Design Agreement. The attorney was out of the office when we put this on the agenda. We have confirmed with the DOT that it can wait till the July 7th agenda. If we could have a motion to postpone this item until that point, we need a few changes on it. Yeah, which is the next meeting. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to postpone this item until the July 7th meeting.
There's a motion, a second. I don't know if that's debatable or not, but, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six is the first amendment to tower and ground space lease between the city of Manassas and Sprint Spectrum LP dated November 7th, 2013. Do, I believe there was a copy of the original as well as the amendment, right, no, the original on the, I'll get it eventually, there was a copy on your desk as well as something in your packet. Are there any questions? Would you, Mark, did you want to explain this or did you want the attorney to explain it?
I will explain what Sprint is asking to do. They are operating under an existing lease agreement that allows a certain number and amount of, or different units of equipment on our cell tower out at our public works facility. And recently, they had a need to add to that list of equipment. They're adding three remote radio units to, to three antenna. And they're very small units, but same token, they were not listed in our existing agreement, lease agreement. So we went back and forth a few times on what would be necessary to allow them to get this equipment installed and mounted. And we found that it would require an amendment to the lease because we needed to update the list of equipment. We needed to update the exhibit. We needed to update the exhibit indicating where that equipment is located on a plan set. And then we needed to determine if there would be a rent increase. In doing some research and seeking the advice of one of our communications advisors, we found that, yes, we could request additional rent. They had suggested, typically what is found in this area in the market is $50 per unit per month. They had seen it in some higher density populated, higher population density areas, as high as $100 per unit. But around here, there's apparently nothing more than $50 per unit per month. Well, we did suggest $100, because why not? And they came back, and they did balk at that. They said they just don't see that anywhere. And the highest they saw was $50. But we were able to get a proposed settlement at $75 per unit per month. So that's what we are recommending at this time. And then Pam looked at the other language needs and did include those as the mayor indicated before you tonight. So I think we're ready to go with this, as stated.
So what we're looking for is a motion to approve the amendment, and the final amendment was what was included at your desk this evening, which is Director Radke stated, with the amount, as well as talking about the actual equipment. So if there's someone who wishes to make a motion, we can move this forward. If people aren't comfortable with this, we can hang on to it. Alderman Vetter?
Again, I'd like to make a motion to approve the First Amendment to the Tower and Ground Space Lease Agreement between the City of Manasha and Sprint Spectrum LP dated November 7, 2013.
Is a motion a second? I don't know if I'm being picked up here. Is there any discussion? Attorney Captain?
If I could just mention what is currently in the agreement is to allow six antennas and six RRUs at $1,200 a month. So this is increasing, well, it started at $1,200 a month. And then there is a, I believe it's a 3% increase annually from the commencement date, which I believe was in November or December of 2013. What would, what would be changed is to add three RRUs at $225 a month additional rent. So basically, that's what the changes are.
Any, oops, any further discussion? Alderman Vetter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mark, is there any structural analysis that has to be done with any of those?
Yes, and that was completed and done satisfactorily, yes.
And at their expense?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 6-0.
Item N is public comments on any matter that was listed on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening?
Thank you again, members of the council, along with fellowing neighbors. I would like to speak on behalf of a couple of items that were mentioned today. I do know, as I mentioned very heavily, that Becky is very committed to making this a positive environment. I know there was a couple of things mentioned. For example, Becky isn't there all hours of the night, is very apparent. As of late, she has recognized that and has been holding additional staff meetings to ensure that her staff is aligned with the way that she would run things herself. She's also been instilling a lot of secondary measures, for example, having people like myself stop in and see how her bartenders are doing. Are they playing the jukebox too loud? Something that she wouldn't normally do. Additional to that, from hearing everyone speak this evening, I'll be bringing ideas back to Rebecca with, along the lines of, what is the acceptable level that the jukebox should be at? Potentially taking the remote away in hours that she's not there, to ensure people aren't turning it up and things like that. I speak directly to the neighboring, you know, community, that, you know, please come by and talk with Becky direct. If it's a certain time of the hour that it's louder, if it's the people standing outside, she is more than willing to address and, you know, really try to control those types of items. And she's heavily committed to that. So is there an immediate answer? You know, I think we're, you know, it's very difficult, because having been at Hank's fifth ward in the past, you know, I know it's been a difficult time at that point as well. I know she's made it a personal commitment to try and clean up some of the patrons that maybe weren't as acceptable, and really tries to pay attention to maybe making it known that they're not welcome in the establishment if they're causing a ruckus outside of the bar, and she remains committed to that. So just wanted to make sure I brought up those items. In reference to the awnings, she did have the Thatcher awnings and was very excited about it, because we felt that it'd be 5:00 somewhere. And she had then found out that those were against the fire safety, in which she had to then start removing them after getting them halfway up. So a little bit of a disappointment, but she has some really great ideas coming up for new awnings. In regards to the windows, I'll be bringing that back to her as well, in terms of the second floor windows, that I don't believe she knew was a concern, being that it was on the second floor. But I'll certainly be bringing that to her attention as well. So, thank you, council.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one, do we have a motion to adjourn at this time? Is a motion a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.